Good evening, everybody. I would like to call the order the special meeting of the board of selectmen for Tuesday, February eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five seven.
And if my brother John's ready for the meeting, I'd like to start the board of finance meeting also, seven oh one. Please join with the pledge. Pledge allegiance. Thank you, everyone.
All right, so correspondence. So it looks like we have one, uh.
Two.
Emails. And we don't normally do them all into the record, right?
No, no.
But just for our record, we have two, uh, one regarding homelessness in the area of the city of Danbury. And the other regarding, uh, real estate taxes, so and electric bills. So we'll take those into account.
And, uh, just to remind everybody, um, I don't know how he's on Zoom tonight or people in front of us, but we have a, um, an email set up for any comments about the budget. It's budget at Bethel. Uh, dash Connecticut dash gov. Uh, if anybody wants to put anything in, it's on our website also, I would imagine.
And that's Bethel dash C T.
C T, I'm sorry. Yeah, okay. So that's it.
All right, first off, uh, ten two fifty, planning is over.
No, that comes up to the, oh, you have minutes first.
A word of finance says Matt.
Yep, okay. All right. So again, our regular meeting on January fourteenth, you have a copy of the minutes. Um, not rushing anybody, but if someone like to make a motion.
January forty, the meeting for January fourteenth, uh, twenty twenty-five meetings.
Do we have a second? Any other comments about the fourteenth? I know some people who were here, not here, just to be sure. Everybody was present.
I wasn't last week. We were not present for the February eleventh.
Oh.
Thanks for your. I'll tell everybody's mind all in favor, seeing what's saying I.
I.
Okay. Uh, also, we have the February eleventh. There was a special, a special joint meeting, uh, would like to get cleaned up tonight. February eleventh, it was a, uh, it's our first presentation night. Um, does anybody want to make a motion on that?
I will make a motion that would accept the minutes as written.
All right, Bob and Free like to second that, I'm sure. Thank you, Bob. I'm sorry.
What finance business is this?
Yeah.
Yeah, Bob. Still here. You said I ran from.
I'll try to look comfortable. I'll try everybody's eyes, same as saying I, including Bob. All right, excellent. Thank you.
And also say for the record, the, uh, the board of selectmen approved their minutes of the special just previous event.
Our joint meeting also.
Come with that. Sorry for holding you off there.
Before we jump into that, so there's.
Well, uh, so. Not recognize the controller.
Hand it out to the board members, like, uh, packet. You're just updating numbers. There's a couple of changes in the highway and go to maintenance and capital plan.
So that changed everything.
Is there anything else? Uh, not till Beth starts talking.
Mary, would you like to apologize?
Okay, well, that's it. Thank you very much.
That's one little night.
That's the entertaining part of the course.
Uh, my budget is very simple. It's flat. Um, it's good flat. I believe the last two years, uh, with one major change, which I'm new to where it's last year. And that is pertaining to the question for a full-time zoning attorney officer. Um, the team is, I call it breaking up. Um, with my impending retirement coming and also probably the loss of the part-time zoning inspector. Um, I think it's very important for the, um, department to increase for a full, uh, full-time person. I take partial blame for just losing a part-time zoning enforcement officer for the last couple of years. That's really the. I will tell you that's because of the knowledge that I carry with me. I'm not afraid to answer a phone. Uh, write a letter about a chicken or a rooster or do or multitask is basically. Um, but you're going to be losing that with, you'll be leaving the office, and I think it's very important. That, uh, you start working on putting the team together and making the part-time zoning inspector a full-time position. Uh, another reason for that would be also, it is my understanding that the selectmen's office along the council has been working on, um. Ordinances pertaining to penalties and things pertaining to enforcement of light and zoning enforcement, which will be very, um, appreciated and effective. So we're not always having to use the court system in order to take any action. I'm, if you have questions, we more than happy to answer them again.
Anybody have any questions on our side, or Beth?
Uh, the forty-three five-ten, like, uh, let's increase, uh, its salary for that part time, comfortable then.
So in the detail, Will, is, um, it's broken out on the bottom section. So the full-time zoning inspector, the difference would be thirty-five nine sixty-four.
Oh, go part-time and full-time.
Correct. The rest is the rest of the departments. Well, yeah, thirty-five nine sixty-four.
But the eight thousand dollars in part-time, is that included in that?
Cause you want.
So part-time or full-time?
So the part-time right now is budgeted for twenty-four thousand thirty-six dollars. To make that position full. We're estimating it to sixty thousand dollars.
Right, so it's add thirty.
Correct.
Beth? Thank you. I know we'll have a lot of time. It's all collected. I think you've done for the town and that office, but this is your last budget presentation. So you must be very excited.
I am.
But I want to say thank you.
I am. I'm not going anywhere. So I'm going home. That's where I want to be and do fun things that I like, help Rachel, do correct things, do land trust things, things that I do miss doing because I work. At housing store. And, oh, my house, my people. Yes, yes.
I'd like to echo that.
No, he can add something.
Well, friendly, no, I think a town planner and zoning official that grew up in Bethel and served French Fridays at friendlies with roller skates back in the seventies.
I remember that. Very basic.
So that's a picture you said.
But you were a gem in Bethel in that. Thank you for always thinking about Bethel.
No, thank you.
And a lot of.
Beth, you were the best one so far tonight. Thank you very much, Beth.
Next up is ten four thirty, uh, senior center.
They made cookies down there. Let's go.
Yeah.
Good evening. I'm Lisa Tom. I have that yet. Um, I'm happy to report that the senior center is doing great. We offer forty-plus activities per week. The activities are well attended, including special events and trips. We offered twenty-three day trips and two overnight trips last year, one to the national parks and one New England cruise opposed to Nova Scotia. We have one thousand one hundred and ninety-three members, which is a twelve percent increase from last year. Our participation has also increased eleven percent. The senior center has had improvements over the past year, including a beautiful new kitchen, a new women's bathroom, and a new sewing room. Both the members and the staff have been thrilled with these improvements. In regard to our budget, the senior center is in good shape with supplies and equipment. We're not in need of an increase and have reduced our mileage expense by three hundred dollars. This is due to many seminars being offered by Zul. I'd like to thank you for your support of the senior center and for being on the board of finance. Anyone have any questions?
Anyone else, I?
Please, and everybody knows it's gonna be a tough year, and we really do appreciate it. Um, we appreciate what you do for the seniors and I've, I've been down there. Bob still does yoga down there, which is nice to see. I do. And again, we're gonna do that one day. Bob keeps bugging me.
Great job.
Thank you, Lisa.
So next up, building inspector, twenty-one A.
I can take care of that.
Yeah. So, uh, library sixty-four thirty-five.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Susan Morton. I've been on the board for approximately ten years. And, um, this is the director, Megan D. We're asking for three point three five percent increase. And that's going to maintain the current levels that we have now, providing for the community of Bethel.
Hey, thank you. Um, so I've been the director here for about eight years, and over the last eight years, we've worked very hard to stream on our budgets, evaluate our services. Look at what we offer and try to vaccinate the needs of the community. Um, you know, the last several months, we talked about experience happening in the community, what's happening. Um, you know, with our community and our taxes and, you know, we really tried to prepare a budget that allowed us to continue to offer essential services. And also reflect what's happening in the community by providing services that allow people to look at their household and make adjustments based on what we're providing, whether that be. Electronic resources, books, audio books, computers, wifi printings. We have partnered with multiple organizations in the town to be asset to them that. Working at the schools, providing over a thousand hours of community service for our high school students, providing study spaces for them, partnering with a tutoring program. Uh, providing space, uh, resources for tax aid to come in and offer services to many of our senior residents in need of free tax assistance. We have provided reference services to over seventeen, seventeen, seventeen thousand individual reference services. We have circulated over a hundred and forty-three theft and physical and electronic items in the last year. Uh, when you look at the budget, you're gonna see that salaries is our highest ask, and the reason for that being, we are going into, uh, budget negotiations this year. While the other departments in town have access to the wage adjustment, we do not need to budget for our negotiations. And if you look back at previous years, you'll see that the money that the Dolphins is always returned to the town. So we're asking for what we need to negotiate and recognizing that the Dolphins will be returned.
You, uh. Under salaries. I saw that you had additional hours put in. When we approved the full-time position last year, one of the questions I asked was. Are we gonna see any additional hours following year between this year? I was assured that we would not see additional hours.
So last year, I assured you I would not add a part-time position in. How, I want to explain the additional hours, cause it sounds like I'm giving out more hours than I typically would. How it works is. With, uh, hours is that everyone has a base schedule. That's the hours they're assigned to work. And then throughout the year, things happen, like people go on vacation, people call out sick, and we need to make adjustments. So say like this past Saturday, somebody called out sick, so somebody has to come in and cover that six and a half hour shift. Now, if that position doesn't have sick time or vacation time, the funds for that move over to the person filling that position. However, if they're being paid vacation or sick for that, then we have to bring somebody in to cover those hours.
Wouldn't that already be accounted for in the previous year's budget?
So in previous years, we didn't, uh, tie that into the budget. We worked, again, understanding that people would go unpaid for a certain amount of time to take off. So if an employee in their first year. Um, work takes vacation time. If you haven't earned vacation time the way the contract is rated, so they would not get paid, so that money would funnel down and be held for additional hours. However, at this point in time, moving into next fiscal year, we will only have one person that stay after will not qualify for vacation time, whereas every other employee will qualify for it. The other concern that came up this year as to why we included this was that Connecticut sick leave changed. So. Part-timers used to earn vacation at one hour for every forty hours worked, starting January one of twenty twenty-five. As they changed that to one hour for every thirty hours worked. So now people are earning sick time at a faster rate, and they also have access to that sick time earlier than they did before. Which changes how we accumulate the funding for those hours.
What did, what did you accumulate for an increase in salary? What, what number did you plug in there for a share for part? Our details on the bottom.
All right. So including the additional hours.
So Brad, can you calculate that for me?
So that line is a five point seven percent.
Uh, I want to know, so we know that the part-timers are not going to get a five point seven percent raise. When it came with that calculation, what I'm asking is, what percent did you use on your old salary line? It's make it simple math. If it's. Two hundred thousand, and you said they were gonna get a three percent raise, that should add six thousand dollars to that line. So I'm asking, what number did we plug into that?
So we chose the base schedule, uh, took the amount that that would have cost, multiplied it by three percent. And from there, we looked at a number of hours typically given out over the course, uh, of the year, roughed that out to about six hours a week. Knowing some weeks we give out no hours, but other weeks we might give out ten to fifteen hours, depending on times of year, like in the summer when people are off or on the holidays. So it roughly worked out to about six hours a week.
So in, in, in the budget that we're currently in, you had two hundred seventeen thousand monthly dollars. There were no extra hours. That's what you're actually paying people if they just work their scheduled time.
If everyone works their scheduled time, it only uses half the time that they have allotted for it.
So I'll come back to it in a second. So a three percent increase of the two one seven oh two one, Brian, is six thousand five eleven.
So roughly, you added an additional six thousand for hours, correct?
Yes. So it comes out to five thousand nine hundred and seventy-six dollars.
And what are their hourly rate?
So their hourly rate would be dependent on.
Just the ballpark where you.
So twenty-two dollars.
So you, you're anticipating about two hundred and seventy-two hours of time that needs to get sold.
So I did add roughly six hours a week, six times fifty-two. Do you do that?
Three twelve. I'm just going by the math. You gave me six thousand divided by twenty-two. Comes out to two hundred and seventy-two. So is that what you're telling me? You're gonna, you think you're gonna incur something to hours?
I'm telling you that there is the potential for that, and there are also other factors that will come up within negotiation that need to be accounted for.
Uh, did you like look at your average over the past few years, how many hours it tooks?
So I looked at the gaps that were created on the last few years were challenging because we did make adjustments, like last year. We left a position vacant in order to have that position modified. So that created an influx of hours. We also had several staff with. Uh, personal circumstances last year that restricted their ability to come into work. So that was an impact as well. So as we've been going through changes over the last years, we've seen fluctuations like up and down.
Well, like I said, it's just, it kind of came to a shock to me after I was pretty pointed in my, if I'm gonna support this. You know, I basically asked you guys, where definitely we're gonna see the increase in hours in this salary line. So. That's why I'm treating my budget at Bethel, which is surprising.
And I understand that. And last year with the information I had available to me, I felt comfortable with saying we wouldn't add a position. Um.
It was hours, not position.
All right, I'm sorry. My understanding is position. I'm sorry if I misunderstood that. Um, but at the same time, I was not in a position to predict where we would be with state changes. And where our staffing would be. So each year we're gonna, we will adjust, you know, a few years ago. We had fifteen part-timers and we had substantially more part-timer hours. And during COVID, we reduced one of those positions down to people P in order to keep a flat budget. Each year, we tried very hard to bring in a respectable number that reflects what's happening in the community, but at a certain point it comes to a head, and this is where we are. I understand if that can't be accommodated, but it is important that you are aware of what we need that way going forward. If there are issues, you know what I originally came to the table with.
Um, how many, how many salaried employees, like full-time employees, do you have?
So we currently have nine, uh, positions, and it's full-time, and we have thirteen positions as part-time.
And is that different from last year? Like, did you have less full-time or more?
Uh, yes, because last year you guys, um, approved us maybe one part-time position but full-time.
Right.
So we went from the eight to the nine.
To nine, okay. And so are all of those, are the part-time negotiated? Like, those are.
So those are the union positions, yes.
Really? So all of your employees?
Not all my employees. Um, all of the part-timers and full-timers who are not supervisors.
What other employees are out?
Well, so you have supervisors, so you have opinion, right?
Yes. So our collective bargaining unit is all of our part-timers with the exception of a sub. Um, and then the full-timers who are not supervisors, so like myself, the head of, uh, the reference and technology services. The supervisor of circulation department, uh, positions like those, that supervisor people cannot be part of the collective.
Okay, which of the.
Six non-union, right?
Yeah, okay, good. That answers my question. Thank you.
Brad, I probably have a question for you. They have to carry for the wage adjustment or wage.
Correct, because they're similar to the board of ed, is that's their allotment money. And then any, if there was a reduction, it would go back to the library board to decide what to do with it.
But they're not carrying the healthcare costs.
Correct. The healthcare cost is carried on the town.
Hey, Megan, um, as the, the state law changes, aside from the forty hours to thirty hours for one hour vacation, have you noticed any other major state changes?
So that was for the sick time, and that's. Yeah, so that's the only one that impacts us at the moment that I'm aware of. Um, vacation time is part of the contract, so that will be determined during contract negotiations.
Megan, the part-time people, how many hours they.
So their average is around eighteen. Uh, each employee does have a different schedule to cover different desks and different programs. But roughly, it'd be four-week average for employees around eighteen.
Somebody have any more questions?
Question, actually. Megan, when we were talking about the, uh, the increase in hours, so right now, there's only a two-hour per week increase for part-time clerk and the rest the same time.
Yeah, and those are, those are hours that have been traditionally, um, filled through the, um, hours lost. So, um, Tuesday evenings, we have programs right now, which is required additional staff, and that's why we've posted the two hours.
So that's really the only increase, operationally speaking. The rest is invented.
Yeah.
Signs. A union negotiator.
I'm just talking about the increase now. Firstly, I took a note. One staff member is not entitled to sick time, sick time vacation benefits, is that right? So is that?
Oh, so the sub would not be entitled to any of that. They can't, they do not have a set schedule, um, they're limited on how many hours they can provide support to us before they would become a given position.
So I'm just in the part-time.
Um, so their hours fall really in that point seven eight, kind of like they pick, so they don't have a designated schedule. So if somebody calls out, then I can reach out to this person and bring them there.
So you're thinking of twenty-three people, I think, is what you're asking, right? So you have your nine full-timers, thirteen standard.
Yes.
Part-timers, and then your floater, so.
Exactly, yeah. Who averages about two hours?
So it's like, it's additive. It's not inclusive in nine one.
Correct.
There seem to be lots of kind of ins and outs, law changes. If it was a strictly status quo budget. From a standpoint of personal time, what would that line look like?
So you mean no exceptions, no changes?
No, no, take, take into effect the change in law or whatever the contract changes are. Presumably, the contract changes are, are somewhere down in the contingent, they're included in the contingent.
So contract changes are difficult to determine.
Sure.
Uh, we are a newly formed unit. So it is a young contract, which means it has the opportunity to go through changes. So it is difficult to predict how that will impact our budget.
I can understand the sensitivity around kind of specifying what that number is, but it does make our job kind of difficult if we're trying to figure out what is truly a status quo budget. The law changes, let alone contractual negotiations.
So you're asking the percentage change or the hard number?
So, so that, that salary, twenty-eight thousand, is with what we're hoping the union contract says. So if we don't have a contingency, so that is part of the budget that we've put forward. So if, if they get a two percent, then it's down harder, but, okay.
That was helpful. Thank you, Susan. And I think I have that.
Yeah.
I'm still trying to just isolate what, what I think Brian was, was kind of probing, that what is he increasing? Like, actually, the latter was, pick a number. One hundred full-time FTE hours. I'm just pulling it out here. This year, it's not the one hundred, which would give whatever it says. Instead, it's one oh five. Again, just pulling numbers out.
So you want the number. You want the number of hours extra.
Yeah.
The increase. So you're two hours per week.
What? Brian was saying, what I was trying to answer with Brian was that it comes out to an additional six, potential six hours a week of work.
But that's the state changes and the additional two hours per week that you want for the quarter.
So, so.
So the state changes are two or four.
Yeah.
Roughly, right, like?
Well, it's, but it's, you remember, it's not just the state changes. It's also the fact that in the last several years, we've consistently had multiple employees that did not qualify for vacation times. But they still took two weeks, say, during the year. So they weren't paid for those two weeks, so that money was used to pay for what we call additional hours. At this moment in time, we only have one position that will not qualify for vacation time next year, which means the amount of money that is available to pay for those coverage hours. At this moment in time will not exist.
So if somebody goes on vacation, you're paying them, and you're also paying the person that's covering for them. So you're double paying.
Which were doing because others didn't qualify initially, and now you know.
And now they all said, correct. So you're double paying for those hours.
So there's less people that are gonna take on daily.
Correct.
Correct. I just want to, um.
Just so I got it straight, the two hours, right? Explain that to me. That has nothing to do with sick time or changes in state, while that's what I want to understand with the two hours.
So traditionally, we know we're gonna have money left over if some people take a time off. So. The two hours is what I want to be able to guarantee into the schedule. So we're open to take. Uh, which has been a real bonus for us because we've been able to do more room bookings, we've been able to do more programs, we've had a lot more patron requests. I would like to, normally in the past, when I've seen influx in patron needs, I could build in a few more hours here and there, based on how much money I was pooling. Um, after each pay period of hours that were lost. Um, this time around, I don't know if I'm gonna have that ability with the sick and with the vacation time working. So I want to lock those in to make sure I have those hours so I can fill the current needs we have.
So Megan, so you're adding programs? I mean.
Yes.
You know this kind of budget, right? And, and everybody, I mean, there's some big, big talk at the board, that is, it just talk everywhere. And, and we're happy to have what we had last year, but I'm hearing you're, you're adding more time and more hours?
More programs.
More programs.
Yep, which was part of our discussions last year, but we asked for the full-time position, so allow us to add this thing here. So that is a continuing of that.
The, the extra two hours, um. Basically, what does that count at dollars? The, the two employ, the employee, how much should they make an hour?
It's forty dollars.
Forty dollars a week? Okay, so less than, what, twenty-two hundred bucks or so?
Even that, try to learn it.
I was doing it a minute ago, but I actually figured it was fifty, that's twenty-six hundred, so. Um, so forty times.
It'd be twenty-eight, twenty.
Okay, so we're talking about two thousand extra bucks for the programs.
Anybody else have any questions?
Just quickly, Megan, uh, the budgeting, the budgeting increase in those how relives. You preparing for the worst, hoping for the best?
I'm preparing for what I, I think is gonna be realistic and hoping for the best.
I understand.
Yeah, if you, if you have a moment and you look at other departments' contracts and look at ours, you're gonna see big gaps. Which may be a concern in the next couple of years, and they are going to financially impact us. Um. And by looking at two separate contracts, ours from another department in towns, you're gonna see gaps that are costly. And we wanna be prepared for what's ahead.
Good to you.
Thank you very much.
Hi.
So Megan, thank you, because at the end of the day, you own a community center. I said this very, you know, a lot of times. So the programs you offer right now are community support reports, so thank you for.
Things are changing, you know, we're seeing. You know, just to point out, I sit through a lot of the different budgeting departments and things and um. We're filling a lot of holes. It's like, like last week, you commented on your Netflix streaming onto your TV.
It's YouTube.
Sorry.
YouTube, right.
Let's do it, man.
Yeah, right.
You know, you call up the library.
I don't use government services for that kind of stuff, but some, I mean, you should.
We're in a world now where.
I gotta get a library.
And we have patients from India and they're locked out of their email. They're locked out of their accounts.
They don't have a thirteen year old son.
No.
Do you remember my passwords?
You know, look at the D M V now. You go to the D M V, they send you away, tell you you gotta do it online. When you go, you go to the library. Library prints out your forms, gets your appointments for you, make sure you're all ready to go before you walk in the door. So.
But don't they, you just have to go like to make an appointment, they, but you can't.
Don't know how, so they go to the library to get the help. There's many people who come in with their computer and go, hello, I lost.
And it's, I told you they got cameras, Nick.
It's tough, it's tough to be everything to everybody. There's a cost to that, obviously.
And if we're not everything, everyone, we have to find resources. We're not lawyers, we're not medical professionals, but we are people that help you find.
Someone helped with my taxes last week over there.
So, you know, we are people, and we can provide the services that we have enough. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna accept the motion to make Chris uh from the building department wait till the end.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Actually, Chris. Brian, you seconded.
You already voted, you haven't.
Chris, Chris, we voted on your budget.
We took off, Brian, and took you.
Chris, we'll let you get back in line here, but no candy cane for you.
Oh, you can pass one.
Can you just introduce?
Yep, I'm a member. So, um, my name is Christopher Baldwin. For anybody new, I'm the building director of the town of Bethel, and. Um, to roll with the department, um, the building department ensures that all new construction limitations were prepared. Comply with the building codes and safety regulations. We review building plans, issue permits, conduct inspections and enforce safety standards to protect communities' health, safety and welfare. We also prosecute illegal work that violates the state building codes and we are able to do this as, um, by protecting homeowners and the general public. Um, and then I just wanted to bring out something also, in Connecticut, anyone can get a general contractor's license. Without showing experience or knowledge of the trade. And homeowners are able to do their own work with no experience or training. So one of the services we provide is, uh, this puts responsibility on the building officials. We do inspections and make sure that everything applies to the building codes to protect the public. Um, the adoption, the enforcement and the services the building department provides are required by state law and are statutory requirements. And then I wanted to go over what the building department provides to the public. By investing in these safety measures and maintaining a proactive approach to risk management. Create a safe environment, we help prevent uh things such as uh losses to the fire. Water damage, health issues, and this helps indirectly, helps the town, the garden insurance costs and premiums. We also continue to provide online services that make it easier and more efficient for the public. We provide transparency for the public as they can access critical information. We are uh responsible for the public records that are kept within the building department and make those available to the public. And we're able to make them so that they're available electronically, which is helpful to many. Um, we've also increased communication between departments so that we can work more efficiently. Spend less time chasing down information and delaying the process. So those are some improvements from these. Uh, opening gears. And then regarding the budget. Um, we're just asking for a one point three percent increase just to help. Uh, some of the office expenses and dues and education. And if you have any questions regarding that, feel free to ask.
Chris, I have a question. First, a comment, you guys do a great job. Thank God, so you guys are one of the most user-friendly building departments in the area, always willing to come out, answer questions, so I commend you. And your staff is.
That's our number one goal is to provide the services that town takes right.
Okay, so I'm being nice.
If they come.
I'm ready.
Any other?
Yeah.
Honestly, I'm, I'm assuming that, um. You. Are without a contract right now, because when I look at the salary increase, obviously. The only salary increase that there's probably for a non-union position, and I know you have several union positions, so. If I look at you, your, your current year budget is three fifty-one, and you've only gone up to three fifty-four, that's only three thousand?
Yeah, so the, all the salary information is put in by the finance department. So if you look in the notes, one set by the first electmen. So one non-union person, three are contractual. So the other four people in the office, three contracts are up six thirty, so that, that adjustment is in wait to test.
Okay, so you're carrying it somewhere.
Unlike the library for some, does the charter say they don't do that in the library?
The library is because.
Oh.
The library board has time out of control.
Oh, that's right.
So the actual number will be dependent on.
Correct, when the, when the contract is set.
She got by that.
Yeah, that wasn't hard.
Which you decided to cut to keep late.
Chris got that three thousand just cause.
You're late, you never know what happened.
Usually you get, you get all the responsibility, right?
Did you have any questions?
Chris, I have a question. Uh, are all the files copied now or all that?
They're, they're all electronic now, and what we're in the process of doing is we're going to make them available to the public so that you can go online. And see the files, but currently they are all digitized, they're searchable. And it's created a huge amount of efficiency within the department because as someone comes in. Instead of looking for the file or going after it, it's there on the computer, all the departments can look at at the same time. There's not any confusion. It's made things much more efficient at all the departments.
Great. Chris, how much revenue do you guys generally bring in? I think that's something that we haven't heard.
Sure, so, just some numbers here. So the last fiscal year, based on what I got for numbers, is. Like five hundred and three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars and fifteen cents.
So you guys basically.
That was, that was the last fiscal year. I mean, this fiscal year, we're at. Two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight dollars, seventy-nine cents.
Yes.
Yeah, um. Yeah, the few guy questions regarding that, I, I have gathered some information.
Chris, I'd like to make a comment. I don't get any permits, as you know. Joe chases us down. That's, that should be part of the record, America, thank you.
Strike that.
But that's, that's, that's software, we, we bought an old house and we needed information about the C F D K and.
Yeah.
Those notes from nineteen sixty-nine were scanned in a computer and it was very helpful.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah. And what a lot of people don't realize too is if you have Adobe, you can search for words. So if you're looking for something in the file and you know a word, you can go ahead and search for it, it just makes access.
But just, just to have it there, you know what I mean?
That's supposed to depend on, sometimes you can scan it, but it doesn't recognize text. I bet some of them aren't.
If you've got handwriting and it's not good, it's not gonna help.
Even if it's a P D F.
But it's there under the address, which is.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Or if you just want permits, type in the word permit.
Right.
It pulls everything up.
On that address, you need.
Right.
Right, yeah.
Anybody have any questions for Chris?
Thanks, Chris.
All right.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Chris. Thanks for coming in late today. You can make it up tomorrow. Thirty-three fifty.
Take care. Good evening.
Good night.
I'm Laura, the director of health. And I'm pretty busy. Um. We have your budget, my budget for you. I have not asked for an increase. I'm asking you to support and continue supporting us as you have been doing. Uh, we were able to lower the West Nile virus mosquito control program update. Which the bulk buying, so that was an asset to the town and still to protect the people. I have um the tracking logs for our free for service and our non-free for service for anyone who would like a copy. And I'll take any questions that you want. Uh, if anybody wants to know what public health is or have an idea, let me know. I know some of you are veterans.
We know, right? We know. Does anybody have any questions for the health director?
Hey, what up with the bird flu, Laura?
Yeah. I got, thank, seventy-five cents an egg the other day.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We got eggs with antibiotics, so no more.
Yeah.
I seriously, at the grocery store the other day, looking at like.
There's something you can do.
The real problem is P and Z's been chasing all the chickens out of town.
That's right. For the roosters and the chickens.
Any other, any questions for help?
Seems like a pretty reasonable. Okay.
All right, thank you. Yours really was the best one so far.
Yes.
This is the shortest one for you. Good morning, it's three words when you're not watching. That stuff is uh forty-two twenty, key maintenance.
Good evening, everybody. Ed Hook. Great to be here again this time of year. I look forward to this.
Okay.
This is the highlight of my February. Um. If we look over the budget, I tried to keep everything. Status quo is just awful, that mostly everything is because of increase in material in parts. So I'll just go down to uh fifty-two oh six, the equipment supplies. I have upped the uh oil budget a little bit uh from last year because of, we got a couple of new cars and. The price of oil hasn't gone up, and I have to get, keep different blends because some of our police cars. Use five twenty, the other ones use zero twenty, and then we have two cars, the administrative one, they're sixteen. So, yeah, and then the regular, the highway is fifteen forty and five thirty, but I buy that in bulk, which we get a better deal at. Um, the computer software for um my scanners and my um. Programs to download files to, how to fix the equipment went up, um, a thousand dollars, so that's, that's that raise on that. It's just for uh software. Um, then we'll go to highway maintenance vehicles. I raised that up because trucks are getting older, so we're getting a little bit more breakdowns on the older ovalways. And the bigger trucks that are over twenty years old that are still on our fleet, so I'm compensating. Um, tires, that budget went up, um, cause we had a, a new Peter belt and. Uh, we add studded snow tires, we don't want changed, so I have to get a set of rear studs for new Peter belts. And that. Um, we'll go down to police vehicles. The big thing is general repairs and Bob and I. We're gonna, we wrote over this the last couple of weeks, and the reason that went up is we've gone over the last couple of years. And the forty-four thousand is basically what I spent to repair the police vehicles to the car for. For a year, so that's why that went up. And the car wash went up. So the police have passes, they go to car wash. We have to make the cars look nice. And any cars are good or any car. I uh park and wreck, just think, again, a um, the old um. Animal, animal controls into their fleets, I just added hopefully basic repairs to that, that's, that's why that went up just a little bit. Um, the building maintenance, just the price of materials has gone up and now we have a full head of. Building maintainers that their vehicles are going all over the place, so I'm getting a little bit more oil changes with them than I used to. And on my last page here is uh administrative vehicles is, um. It's why I've gone up on that one item from three thousand, thirty-two hundred. Health issues and all. Can you tell me where you are currently with your policeman's budget here today?
You want me to answer that?
Continue, please, cause I, I didn't download it. So.
I know it's gonna be.
I know Bob has that ready. I got a whole list of questions.
I was trying to, I was trying to get one since this last budget meeting. I was trying to take these uniforms. Right now through last week's check run, uh, the spend is thirty-two thousand, so it's roughly sixty-nine, seventy percent spent. With two, seven and a half months, so it's trending to be closer to that sixty range. Um, last year, you can see it came in at forty-eight, the year before that it was seventy-one, the year before that it was thirty-nine. So it's been jumping around a little.
Seventy-one was. On uh perceived circumstances where Ford was having problems with engines and they didn't want to admit it, and we had to put two inches in the police car that weren't covered under one. So. And plus, the water pumps are good, it's just, the engine just went.
The lower end.
The, 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 there was metal in the engine, we had everything oil analyzed, it was not our fault because we used mobile one. On all our vehicles and we do the oil change every five to six thousand miles. Um, but yeah, we had a run of just bad engines. And then, and then some of it too is, the police budget too, paramedic vehicles comes out of that budget.
Uh, paramedic actually gets charged in the paramedic fund.
Okay, I did not.
We moved some of them.
I, I'll read, I'll just, just hear that for later. Yep.
No, so that's, we moved, that's thirty-two is just the police. There is like ten thousand, twelve thousand.
But that includes everything for their maintenance. You're talking about car washes, oil. Well, no, car washes is different, that's, it was a different one, that's three thousand dollars for car washes. So, the other stuff is brakes, tires. So, all right, that's. So that's. Yeah, tires. Yep. And do you have a schedule when you change the tires on the police cars or like? We have a gate, we like every, when, when the police cars come in, I'm gonna say, we get a cruiser like. Every month and a half to two months, okay, because that's, the, it's a five thousand mile oil change. But Rick and I bring the car to the lift, we don't just drop, we're not checking it, we don't drop the oil, we don't change the oil filter and then send you on your way. We pull the tires, we check, check that, check the brakes, we go into the chart, car, check the suspension, make sure the shocks are good, no broken coils. The drive line and everything, so it's like, I tell when the police ask, oh, can I leave the car for an oil change, I have to explain to them, it's, it's not an oil change. This can take forty-five minutes for a basic service for all everything to a day if I need to order brakes. Or if there's something else wrong, I need tires, and, and I don't have all the tires in stock, and I gotta call the lawyer, now is what they have in stock. So yeah, when we do a service, it's, it's everything that's looked at.
So yeah, when we do a service, it's it's everything that's looked at. And then I also ask the drivers, any other complaints that you have? Why have you here?
The tires, like, are the tires.
State fit.
They're state fit.
Yes, and we use all weather. We, when when the cars come in, after they run with the stock tires that they give us, we have pursuit rated all season tires on on our.
They're slow rated and all that.
Yes, yes.
Okay, good. That's right.
Yep.
I I'm curious, um maybe this is for Brad, the town cars. They're not in this car wash, but that's only the cops, right?
So that line is the line for the car wash is for everybody.
Everybody.
Most of it's, most of that is the police cars, so that's why it's in that line without splitting that bill seventy-five.
Gotcha, fine.
We're blaming the police, but it is more. They're like eating.
When they're here, look what you get.
Anybody have any questions? I'm shocked about the car wash passes, but.
Well.
Sometimes it takes a couple of years to flush things out.
Yeah, the good news is we're right now, we we don't have a highway garage wash yet.
Right, or pay the union employee to wash the cars.
Right. We don't have it. We're to wash the cars.
Well, I get it.
That's my point. We, by the way, we could look at that.
Where are you guys supposed to get car washed? Um, I think it's.
It's uh Freddy's on uh.
Yeah, I'm. We all expect.
Yeah.
I'm sure they give you a real.
It's the unlimited car wash. I think it's um.
How's that?
Nope, just a, I'm a good cheap car wash, although they let the cops, you know, get the inside done once in a while. They're free. So.
What do you like?
That's like. Well, some bucks a month, I think, for a car. I think it's ten bucks a month for a car. Yeah, unlimited again.
Well, to the point of having our own car wash, was it last year or the year before? You looked into it and it was an exorbitant amount of money for like some kind of automatic?
There was discussion.
Yeah.
And the problem is getting rid of the water.
Yeah, that's where the issue.
Environment is required. So how is, I'm sorry, uh what do we do for trucks now? We don't wash them.
That's going to be my political correct answer. When we bring them out and we.
It's the rainwater, basically, soaking water. Something a union agreement's coming.
Well, it sounds, it sounds like we're doing financially reasonable approach of spending three thousand dollars a year to buy cars as opposed to what was a very expensive front remembering, right?
Yes.
But I'm fairly sure I'm in the early stage of all cylinders. Remembering this.
We can go back to the.
I think that car wash was also for the the highway trucks also.
No, no.
Oh. It was just going to be the cars.
And a sweetie.
So but the expensive thing that Mr. Manfred is talking about is if we have to put in a truck wash, that you have to have like the grates underneath, you have to collect it all because the road salt and everything else. So that's, that's the MS four, right? That's something different.
Yeah, we're not doing that.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so car washing sounds like the way to go.
Yeah, thank you. You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Forty, twenty, thirty public works.
Anyone do? I'm Eric Hudson, Public Works Director uh for accounting thirty. Um. We've got minimal changes here because the salary. Uh, one point three five percent. And most of that is in salary. Much said. Bragging, I took lessons without that. Other than that, little bit of movie changes.
Anybody fair? Thank you, sir. Forty-two, forty highway. Yeah, I'm sorry, Eric. I didn't, I didn't follow you out. That was probably the best one.
Oh. I mean, words, if you're counting.
I think Laura's. Good.
You're the most soon to be retired.
Bob, can you introduce yourself to the jury here?
Possible. How we should pretend.
How many years? It's gotta be fifteen.
Twenty. This is twenty-four this year, I think.
That's us.
Pretend it. Right, this is my forty-second year.
Right. You've been on the shuttle crew for a long time.
A couple of days.
Before we get into it, because it's going to get ugly, I want to thank you for your time.
Okay, now let's get to it.
It's a favorite, Bob.
Just use this.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, I mean, you know. I really, really appreciate, you know, forty years, all the life officials are possible. You know. A long time ago, we took a big chance on our road building program, um. You know, and with everybody's support, you know, that program has been very successful, you know, and it's me trying to explain to you, I mean, I can see you for hours and hours and hours, you know, me.
Show me, don't tell me.
Right, exactly. And um it's been very successful. And not only that, you know, accomplishing all that work on top of all the regular too. Well, I'm I'm so appreciative of everybody's believed in us. I love the life officials and support, so I thank you for all that. You know, going back to all the years it's been a great.
Did you almost say funds or no?
Uh, would you say fun?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Oh, yeah, no, it's been, no.
I want to personally thank you for doing such a great job on Elgin Avenue.
Did you get on a family?
No.
No.
I I left the next day and then now look, I will never be capable of it. And now you're having a party and you're leaving, so my dreams, my dreams are dead.
I'm sorry.
That's all right, just.
Let me go figure something.
I don't think you've ruined her dreams.
But yeah, I really appreciate everybody's, you know, support for it. That means so much.
Thank you for.
Thank you very much, sure.
Thanks.
Um, so I'm going to budget for my glasses on here. Um. I guess. Sellers, all that stuff, that's all. Time travel through that. So maintenance repairs, I had to bump up. Um. Basically, it's been, it's all been asked, it's basically on asphalt and um just street side costs. So there's been some, some, I make some adjustments in there. Um, I don't know if anybody had any questions about it. Yeah, for the long term. I believe. Probably. No, go ahead. Yeah, I saw the increase in the road construction.
Yep.
And, you know, I personally can appreciate that, and I certainly don't want to go backwards. Right. But I'm not sure that this is the year where we're talking about laying people off and, you know, possible cuts. That it's the year we want to raise the budget by twenty-eight percent. What would it look like if we held the budget at a million? If mom. You know, we always make sure. I understand that, you know. Um.
No one's looking, no one's getting to go backwards.
Yeah, exactly.
And I don't want to go back.
Yeah, that's what important me because if we put a big cut into the to the road budget, trying to make that up over a few years or three or four years or whatever, it's difficult, right, to get you back on track and catch up with it. So we have to cut two or three roads off. I mean, they're not, they don't kill themselves, obviously, so um. This year, last year, we did, well, we completed our road work for less money than what we were fucking for. Okay, um. The liquid de-escalated some during the course of the season. Uh, we bundled some milling jobs together, so we saved on the square yard cost of milling jobs. But we made sure that we were unit cost in our our veteran place asphalt and that plus fifteen hundred ton total jobs, we bundled three or four roads all at once. So we made up some money that way. So what what you're asking me is, hey, can I make a do for?
Late fifty where you were last year.
Again, so I can only, I can only tell you that we could try, you know what I mean, right? Uh, and if it comes down to that season, you know, if we don't escalate on our liquid, everyone goes down again a little bit.
There's nothing to say that, you know, midway through the season, the budget looks different, you know, money's come in, things aren't as bleak as we thought. And you say, hey, we're seventy-five thousand short. I really like, I guess you won't say it, you won't be here. Someone, someone will come in and say to us that, you know, maybe we're seventy-five thousand dollars short. Can you take it out of cap on the non-recurring so we don't fall behind on the list?
Yeah, so 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 I put, you know, every single road, you know, the number, the number that you get to, right, as a sheet for every single road, and I'm sure you people have seen, I estimate all of our road, everything is on here. But there's also um contingency and escalation out of past, you know, the subtotal of road for the road and you have contingency and escalation, which is twelve percent of that subtotal, right? So seven percent of it is um escalation in the liquid. And that, what I mean by liquid is liquid's in asphalt represents five percent of the total ton of product. And that's, that changes weekly uh during the season. Then the other four is contin- is contingency. Uh, we're we're rebuilding a catch base when we find some bad piping or something like that on a road job, we have to change that, that covers that. So if we don't find those things, when we when we don't get it with escalation or we de-escalate like in this summer, right? Then that gets easier for to get us to that total of road for this money.
I guess I just want you, you to know that if the cut comes, at least if the motion's made and it's accepted, it's not because we don't, we're not proud of the same job. And, you know, we're so happy with where we found the road budget and took a team effort.
Yeah, definitely, yeah.
To to get that done. And if we don't want to do that, that hurts you, it's just.
Right.
We've got some really painful decisions coming up this budget season.
Yeah, I hear you. I hear you, you know.
Uh, any road reclamation? Do you have any roads that you got to full depth recovery?
I have so much left. There's a few onesies and twosies here. We're close to, you know, we got eighty-six and a half miles. Someplace in there ninety miles, if it park on that, bring it to ninety, right? And we're we're close, we're close to sixty miles of full up reclamation work has been done. Um, there's there's onesies and twosies around that are just smaller roads that are here and there. There's nothing to be concerned about. Um, all the, all the heavy lifting is done. Never have to do it again, so on.
Right, so the biggest thing is milling then.
Yeah, so.
I was just trying to, I'm sorry. You said there's not any more heavy lifting to be done. Is that at the sixty miles for which full reclamation is already good?
I don't.
At the richest point, there's still some.
Yeah, but they're small roads, you know, there's fifteen thousand square yards in a mile. So there's, there's small neighborhood roads out there. There's six thousand, like six thousand square yards. You know, and they're 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 scattered about in town. You know, there's there, and there's not very many, many of that left. You know, so when you look at that sixty miles of reclamation work done, right, so the rest of that mileage, right? A lot of those roads were built from like the seventies and on up, right, so they have gravel, good gravel underneath of them. It's, it's, some of these materials are decent, so you don't have to do that. But you don't, we're not going to do, there's never going to be need to do all that powers of those because of how the roads were built. You know, a chestnut ridge was a road that was passed through the woods, it's one of the years ago, right, so there was no base underneath of it where and where, you know, part of moving off the Sunset Hill or something, or for the two roads, side roads off of Shelly Road were built at numerous times with some of these materials on. So you don't need to go and do those roads unless, you know, some kind of weird problem crops, but that's not true in this case. Chris, talk.
Yes, come on. But can we, well, let me step back. To Brian's point, I I think of it a little differently, but it's all in the same concept, right? We don't want to go backwards. And I don't think we want to create tomorrow's problem today. And there's only, there are just a couple, in my mind, there are a couple of accounts in this budget that really does prevent creating tomorrow's problem today. And and this is one of those accounts.
Right.
And I know at least four or five of us have been on this board for ten or or a board to consider this for ten years.
Yeah.
And it's been ten years of trying to keep, continue to add so that we got to a point where, you know, knock wood, we felt like we're in pretty good condition. And I think that was, that's a huge compliment to you and your team because you helped us through this. Do you have the information that supports the two, uh, the million two seventy-five? As far as the, then can you share that, whether it's like the roads that you think will be done or won't be done here, making money now? Sure, and to me, this is an extremely important account. And we really want to continue to fund it adequately so that we're not creating tomorrow's problem today.
Yeah, so there's a, I I I mean, I don't have a bunch of these, but um, and I mean, I can show you, I can give you some some of the roads, the roads that, you know, because like I said, we do all.
I think what Bobby's saying, are they rated? Like, okay, you know what two roads are going to be dumped off?
Yeah, so there's a list here and and you can pass it around if you want, so.
And you want to make sure.
Yeah, yes, yeah, Brad, maybe.
Yeah.
Everybody. Doesn't have to be now, Bob.
Seventeen.
We select the liberation you go, right? So you can look at it afterwards.
Yeah, no, that's fine. We can read it off to you right now if you want.
Just you guys have done a fantastic job projecting eighteen months into the future as to what you're going to be able to do. And so I think we can take your word, your assessment as, look, this is what's going to happen if we funded at X. This is what maybe is going to happen or not happen if we funded at Y. That will inform our deliberation as to where this goes. And I don't think anybody wants to go backwards, which is reducing.
So it's something against that with the list. If there's more roads on that list named without any dollar signs beside them. Right, and that's what I would like to do, right, but we know we're not going to get there money wise, right? So we we pull some things off and, you know, we, this is the, you know, the list is kind of, it's not just for one year. You know, it's kind of a look forward. Right, and then we make a decision on, okay, we do road A versus road B or B versus things on.
It might also be worth saying that, you know, talking to Bobby in the department prior to this, I think this number was significantly higher even before it got here of what I think Bobby wants or what we felt needed was significantly higher than what this is. What was it?
One point six.
Right, if we go for some of the newer ones, what, what did we increase to get to the million fifty last year? Right, so maybe like it's four hundred thousand is, but last year was a heavy lift.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
I have it up already because. Twenty fourteen, we budgeted two fifty. Twenty fifteen, two hundred thousand, twenty sixteen, two hundred thousand.
Wow.
Twenty seventeen, five hundred thousand. Eighteen, we went hundred thousand to uh to six hundred thousand. Then the seven hundred thousand, seven hundred thousand held in twenty twenty. Twenty twenty-one dropped to five hundred thousand.
Right.
Again, COVID, I took no, I did not know what was going on with everything else. Um, twenty-two was adjusted to one point two five. Remember they, the budget adjustment in the middle of the year.
So, Brad, honey?
That was the um twenty-three. It was eight fifty, twenty-four went to a million. And last year, the adjustment of fifty thousand was pretty much to keep it at a million with a five percent increase for inflation. Thank you.
So John, to your point.
Yeah, I remember last year, we just said, we're going to make a commitment. So I agree with Bob and 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 Brian that, you know, we don't want to go backwards, but last year I thought we took such a leap forward. And when you get a year with a lot of pressure on this town budget, you know, I think it's a fair, you know, a fair look at.
Thanks. Yeah. And by the way, for the record, I wasn't, I wasn't putting out there that one point six was the number that I was thinking of or comfortable with anyway.
Yeah, the guy that's leaving.
Saying, you know, he he had a big list that he wanted, but.
Well, we have, yeah, we have a big list every year. And to your point, um, John, um, you know, the per time plus the asphalt over the past several years climbs.
That's right, that's fair. That that number that Brad's talking about, you got to remember, we're taking.
So Asian right away. Right, so, you know, what you're actually getting in Tomage. Yeah.
Forget the dollar now.
Yeah.
What what would be a good number?
So what?
I just want to make sure I understand what this is. This is the list of roads to be done next year?
Yeah, in the budget we're talking about now, so this is.
Whatever has numbers is what adds up to the one point two million.
Okay.
Uh, request.
Yeah.
And whatever has a blank was taken out.
And aren't we at a point now where we're saying, here's the roads we're going to do, and we're actually doing them each year? So we're keeping our.
And we're paying for their working budget.
Right. That's good because we work in that.
Yeah, Bob Manfred was a big part of that.
Eric, I just want to make sure, you said that uh the items that have no cost, you can take it out from the one point six thing?
Yeah, so.
That's more, that's more blank spaces than I thought. Well, I'm sorry, from one sixth of one.
So part of stuff that was done last year?
Yeah, we did a shim core sign where we had some surface strip from wool pits up to.
But that's just, that's a temporary fix.
Yeah, but we can pay over top of that. It's not like we have to go and have to work to it. No, it's just a whole the surface was stripping off in there from the shade and that's the whole that you got, so it's, so it doesn't get worse. And then it had to be, became a bigger expense on that one.
Holy Ghost is a good example, too, of a road where it's done some work, but then you do it in sections each year, I mean, the whole road.
So we take, you know, we take money out of the two, out of our two oh seven account, I have repaired. A hundred and seven thousand in there in my two oh seven minutes of repair, that's that's. Section repairs. You know, so. You know, there's there's a bigger lift, you know, that's a, you know, the the list here at one point six cut down to one point two, some of these roads. You know, we can go in there and do some small section repairs on them, and get them down the road for a year or two or whatever. Yeah, it's 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 kind of there.
Some money in another account you set for that?
Yeah, yeah, I have one, I have a hundred and seven thousand by two oh seven now. They used to be in the four oh four, but we moved it over to the two oh seven account. And that's that section of repair stuff.
And this list without a number, is that next year? Next, next year?
Next year, during the during the during this year, we evaluate roads constantly. And then next year, another list will come out.
Okay.
And you'll probably see, you'll probably see a lot of these roads that are funded on there on that list.
How do you decide, is it that people are calling and saying, hey, our road's really bad, or yourself to drive it around and notice it?
Um. Because coffee spills off the dashboard. Folks are for nothing, they're free.
So, there's a, there's a bunch of ways to do this, um and one of the things that um. That we worked with Dan on is we have a, we have a program, we call it valuing roads, where we run camera. That runs us through a software program. And then it prints out a map of all the roads in that condition. Um when I say we were, we were. We were seventy-one or seventy-two percent better than average overall through the whole town. And that's a pretty high number, even um. The the company who was working with us doing that was was like, wow, that's pretty impressive. As far as roads are, we look at the roads ourselves, we use that program, but we also. We go out and evaluate those. We know what certain asphalt conditions look like, what causes, so on and so forth. We do get calls for sure, you know, we get a few calls, hey, my road, you know, and generally that coincides with, yeah, they are correct. You know. But we just can't be everywhere.
Right.
And you know, we have to be careful how we pick, you know. Um if I pick a road that's say eight hundred feet long, that's on Allen Stone Hill someplace, right? And it's only a three hundred ton road, the unit costs to do that road by itself, it's going to be very hot. Okay, so. You know, Elgin and Whitney are in pretty bad shape, really bad shape. High Street was, and needed an overlay put on it, maintenance overlay put on it, more, you haven't even done. So we bundled all those jobs and did them on the same job. So our unit costs, asphalt used, but our unit costs way up. Oh, asphalt, but our unit costs way down, and a million also.
Do you take into account how many people live on that road?
That's a good question.
Like, there might be a long road, which is a few houses on it. You might prioritize the short.
No, I would say no, I would say no. Um. I do tell, you know, I would, I take into account that, you know, emergency services have to line their roads, and we have to plow those roads, and stuff like that. Um, you know, so you don't want, you know, if the road's half a mile long, there's one house, I. I don't really, I don't, yeah, no, I would say, I would say that'd be pretty long.
People love to complain about the roads.
Yeah.
It's good that we can say to them, we have a plan, a plan.
Yeah.
But of course, they want to know, what about my road?
Absolutely, absolutely, and yeah, yeah, I mean. You know, the program we put in place a bunch of years ago, was really to keep this bottom number. We wanted to keep burning the house down. You know, oh, we don't do anything to the house, it burns down, everybody's. Rubbing our hands and wondering what to do, and we have to dump a ton of money, we don't want that. And we just want that. That even though.
Right, right.
Right on that, but it's not, it wouldn't. And that was important. Well, all that work, all the reclamation work with those roads. Those roads will get to maintenance overlays out before any. Milling work gets begun, milling works is thirty, thirty, thirty five thousand a mile. They don't need to be painted, that kind of thing. So those reclamation work are set up after that done. That takes us, you know, a lot of close forty years.
Okay. So these roads. Once you do that with the milling work, that's, they're good for forty years.
A reclamation, no, no, no. But we don't have to do, yeah, you never do the reclamation.
Maybe explain what a reclamation?
It's a new base. But he's talking about a top, a top layer on it.
Right, okay.
Because the the work is done in the frost and the and the and the, right? If there's no base, that's where you're getting the cracking, but if they rebuild the road, I mean.
So we rebuild, we rebuild the base, we use the existing road, we grew up, we rode it till it, just like it's some reflection of our. Right, grade it out and use that asphalt to make a strong base. It doesn't, it's not a ton of money to do that work, right, but the asphalt on top of it is very, very expensive. So we 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 want to put, that's an asphalt, alright. Or base, you know, it's like kind of put a nice fancy paint job on a rusted car.
What do you think, Bob, before we finish most of that work, except for.
Yeah.
It's.
What, I would just say, too, it might help with your question, I've been here about four years, so. Tenth of the time Bob's been here, but I know. But um.
He knows us half the time.
I've never, this is, his list has always been spot on. The only thing I would say that changes it is if we have a real bad pothole season, and then. You know, something you can't expect, but in those cases, it's always just like a section. It's never the whole road, so. You know, whatever Bob puts forth is generally, that's what we just, and.
Yeah. We're not gonna have Bob to kick ass longer.
Actually, we, we might ask.
Demolition derby. Bob, I'm gonna bring up the road.
Go ahead.
Taylor Road.
Taylor Road.
And I know you did a couple patches on it, but it's. You you gotta consider doing something on that, it's a highly. Travel.
Alright. It is, and I try to, you know, I have, no, I try to strike that balance of, okay. And yeah, I agree, I'm not, I.
We talked about it.
Absolutely, you know, I agree, and you know, we go out and look at these roads, and I, you know, I have to look at them, not just. There's seventy-five potholes on that mile road, and there's only ten on that mile road, and how can you guys go out and pay the road with only ten potholes on it? Well, there's a method behind that madness, I'm trying to protect that service overall on those roads, right?
Then you have utility, utility work coming up, where they don't want to pave the road, it's the utility department's gonna be taking up. You know.
With your hand for a while, right?
Yeah, well, no, I mean.
You did a beautiful job on my street, it was gorgeous, and what? The year later, six, eighteen months later, they came and they cut the whole street off. Couldn't believe it, it was just, this gorgeous job and how we're playing water wise.
Yeah, I mean, we notified all the different utilities, you know, hey, this is what we're gonna be doing, can you come in and do any of your work, you know? Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. Every source is my worst.
Bob, you said to us, I have to go back into my prior year notes, but that. You thought the cycle was something like twenty or twenty-five years, right? Get all the roads done, and surely it did twenty-five years and go.
Yeah, I don't think it was, I, yeah, if if I don't remember, it wasn't twenty, I turned twenty-five, I can tell you that. My goal was to get twenty years out of that reclamation and that to the, to the course of asphalt, put on that road, right? Uh when we started doing this, the 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 mixed design of the asphalt was called Marshall Mix. Uh and then in the mid two thousand eight, nine, ten, someplace. The mixed design was changed to what they call the super pay. So, and really what it is, is it's it's a temperature range widening of the liquid. And a little bit of some changes in the in the aggregate, so. Uh one of the things we've noticed is. The Marshall Mix roads have seemed to done very well. Halt trees on the flats down here by the police station coming into town and stuff like that, that road's got twenty-two years on it, I think. You know, and incorrect enough service, but that's the road's equipment, control problem, right? Super pay roads were having problems in the shade. Because now we're running millions, we're running eighteen to twenty percent build asphalt in that mix also. And the liquid is the quality of, the the quality of the liquid is in that grade, so we're getting, we're losing some life on those roads. And if you had somebody from like Yukon come down. That does the mixed design for the G O T, and they say, well, you're not probably gonna get more than twelve years on your road. Right, I mean, to me, that's insane. You know, we're, well, I'd say we're averaging around eighteen now, and better, I got a bunch of roads out there that are, that are twenty, twenty ones. You know, and I have some out there that are. Fifteens and sixteens that are starting to see some service clear up. So strict water from the design of the asphalt.
And why does the shade make a difference?
So shade, the water is the biggest, is the thing that damages the asphalt.
Not drying off.
Right, and and it, so a road sits in the shade, it's on, it's one section of the road. After a rainstorm, and it dries it up that day, that next section that's in the shade might be damp for a couple of days after that rainstorm. So the water is detrimental to, number one, the recycled mill material. And the liquid asphalt, it's something that's important, right? Way that's.
Not the good stuff anymore.
Yeah, exactly, so. Anytime, any places where there are shades, it's where, you know, we have dry summer, you know, and every year, you can say to yourself, alright. We paved that road, it's gonna last exactly twenty years, right down to the minute, right? But you have freeze law cycles, you have wet summers, you have dry summers, you have all these things. You know, we're we're building roads in the most difficult place in the country to build roads, because. Environmental conditions, you see. But nowadays, the water, you never used to see surface stripping on the roads where the top four strips off, see that proverb. We test, we actually tested asphalt. Permanent, what it's caused.
Cause I, I, like all of us, right, you're out on a summer picnic. Roads tends to find its way onto that discussion topic.
Yes.
And people seem to understand or agree with. The, oh, well, if it's twenty years from the cycle.
Yeah.
You're doing four to five miles a year. And your road will come up at some.
Yes.
There's all this other stuff that we talk about, in New England, so you gotta deal with four different kinds of seasons, and all, all the other.
Yeah, that by far is a fixed number, you know what I mean, it's it's difficult. By design, to create that number.
But we can still use it when we're talking to people.
Yeah.
Is that what you talk about?
Just give him body self, man.
Any other questions, Ron?
Both informative.
Yeah.
Yeah, I want, in fact, I want you to go on YouTube channel. Exactly. That's exactly. Like and subscribe.
Okay, let me move on to forty-two, forty-five transportation.
There you go. Uh so. The book that has changed really is when we contracted services. Um. Bring it up from. Prior to budget of sixty-one, sixty-one thousand, other to seven thousand. It has some discussion about, basically, that's to bring it up to match prior to this spending. Um and Brad, I kind of detail, but I know this, this line evidence was flat.
Is that the the contract service and them pulling it back and forth to Danbury?
Um, yes. That's, yeah. And Washington, and H R A. Has decided on the note.
And I'm sorry, that's line fifty-three thirteen, you added eighty-two hundred, that's to get into the current spending projection for this year.
Yes.
Seventy.
Yes, yes.
How much of that is H R A? You know, okay.
I would say like ten to fifteen.
Of the increase. You know.
Of the, of the increases, that's.
Because I know H R A, the hazardous waste can go up by the half of years.
So prior year, we paid H R A just under eleven thousand dollars.
Um, it's not a lot to talk about there, I don't think there's enough users, and I I know it's a secret cow to a lot of people. Um, we've tried to make the permit for free before to get more people to use it. Any ideas that we're gonna get more people to use this thing? I mean, household garbage is thirty bucks to pick it up.
Do we have the idea?
We had two thirty in the morning, but.
Yeah, maybe I have to throw it in the furnace here, because I don't have those over shoot me.
I don't know, I think you've been one of the good ones, I mean, one, one.
It has to roll through here, but.
Yeah, when it's a free permit, I mean, we just took off business, I mean. I think the idea behind it was like, alright, somebody, you know, somebody that took on to use it every single week, but they want to face it out or whatever. You know, we've sold, we've, yeah, we've issued a lot of permits for that.
So you need a permit for that, right? If I have a couch.
Yeah.
Uh Sunday, or I'm sorry, Saturday morning, and I don't have a permit, I can't drop it.
Correct, correct.
The permits are free.
Yeah.
You just gotta go downtown hall and get it.
Yeah.
Come on, Nick, get with it.
So I can do it next Saturday.
Sure.
Yeah.
I'm in that category, I had a. No pass in three days, pretty rough station.
Oh, yeah.
Hey, they are free.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Two cars, right, per household?
No.
Yeah.
We have to pay to dump yourself.
But it used to be fifty dollars.
Yeah, how much per pound?
It's twenty-five cents per minute.
Ten cents for food square.
Well, we'll be ten cents.
Yeah, when they charged for the permit, I think it was sixteen cents.
You know, the idea was, you know, originally, my, you know, our deal was. Was to get as many permits out there as we can, and even if they're the person that just comes in, maybe wants some flack or something like that, right? But they come into transportation, they're like, you know. This is pretty cool place, I mean, there's a lot of, you know.
Are you gonna talk about the free cable at this point?
Yeah, it's a social factor, you kidding?
So it's a social thing, right, because the idea was to get more people to me, if I can get them to watch, you know, the old. You know, razor blade thing, old thing, you know, whatever. And I can get more people to say, how do we, whatever. But the idea was to get the people to commit, you know. For that once or twice. Yeah, I mean, it's, yeah.
Anybody have any questions about the transfer station?
The contract service line has been around sixty thousand dollars budget since twenty seventeen, we haven't moved it up. Our great tradition.
Oh, yeah.
Because the expenses.
Excellent. So I forgot. Thank you, guys. Thank you on the transfer station.
So next up is a forty-two sixty, go do maintenance.
Okay, um.
That was your last presentation.
So he's got the tree water.
Cause I'm sure there's a tape coming out or something.
Um. This one overall, increased percent change, less than half a percent. Um, we even had a decrease in contracting services. And um. That's largely due to the new clean contract that we got. Uh that was what I was prepared for um last year. And um. So that's, that that decrease has covered other increases. In the fifty-three thirteen count. Great.
Yeah. Forty-two seventy. Oh, come on.
That's, we're, we're like, you know, like nine weeks.
There's no more ashes out there.
Well, now it's the beach trees are done.
Yeah, now the beach trees, so, having them is so good, so. We don't have a ton of these trees around, they're more like deeper in the woods. Um. So, I guess there was not so many. So it's not like. Something you're crazy about.
So would you say you could cut this account, or you want? Megan's like, right, oh, you're.
But you know, to Bob's credit, he does get every source to do a lot of the work for free.
Oh, yeah, that's the way to go. That's the way to go.
He gets a lot of that work done for free.
Why are you telling me? Well, it's in our utility though.
And and to, and to respect, it's also Kathy. She's all alike, she's always a good woman, be on everybody.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Good job, though.
And that's your, that was your last one, that was the best. Well, that was the best.
Public work still is the capital.
I was, I was figuring this out with my. I was, I figured this out like, like a couple of weeks ago. I think this between party problems, I would vote for it, I think it was like twenty-five thirty then. Boy, I get president. And I can tell you this, Will. We started over at center school, and you were on the board of finance, and you're like twenty.
Twenty-something.
Twenty-seven, sorry, you were like twenty-two, thirty-four or something like that.
I was like twenty-four, twenty-four.
I'll get your job, we're both a team.
You're right. I saw that song for his dad.
Yeah, I think it was, I think it was thirty-five years. We opened the, uh, the UP C and G with the, you opened that off. Yeah, yeah.
Sorry, when did you start sounding like your father? Cause I mean, I know, I think that's how your father stopped.
Alright, capital.
Yeah.
Alright. What do you want to start with? Uh? Start retrieving it for highway? Oh, let's go to highway. I find my.
There's two lines.
Oh, there it is. I can't see it.
We need to see main. Something I didn't did.
We can get it later, I'm like, I'm not with you.
We think they're just asking for a hydraulic.
Yeah, they're.
I didn't do that.
They're all lit. So we don't have to spend a couple hundred thousand dollars to change the lift system. We haven't done it, so. We have to get that to more of a supplement, cause I think that was approved.
Wasn't approved, was in your list, assets?
Oh, that's right. Nice try, right?
That's right, that was great.
Let's give that one five. And then the air compressor angle places like eighty-four to forty-five thousand, that's one round.
What was that sound?
The air compressor.
Yeah.
Yes. No. Now those lifts, let's see, the. Dump trucks and everything.
Yes.
So it's gonna lift.
No, we're fully loaded.
Yeah. And they're more, they're, they're. Over there, about eighty-five thousand, ninety thousand, something like that, right there.
Yes.
And to replace our lift, the whole lift, the dump truck was gonna be a couple hundred thousand, so.
Cause that's the one in the ground.
And they're portable. They're portable, we all run it around, they communicate with each other.
We don't have any portable ones yet. I thought we did that a year or two.
No, we talked about it.
We talked about it.
Was that on the two thousand twenty-four plan before they pushed it out? That's my thought.
So that's that.
Okay, so jump into the highway.
So on the highway, um. We have, from last year, we had eighty-five thousand there, replaced one of the dump. Thousand eight Sterling. Uh, we got, that, that has to be done this year.
Are you saying we didn't approve that and it allocated?
It's, so it was on last year's capital request for this year that we're in now. It hasn't gone, hasn't brought a number to the board of selection then yet. But he's talking about, and then they just talked about it again.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, so I want, I want to just check up. The pricing I've had on a couple of schools or something like that, so.
And that two thousand eight chassis is good enough to put eighty-five in it? That's what I was gonna ask too.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, it's a Sterling and if they don't.
It's a Sterling. Um, no, it's got, you know, it's got an I C comments and it's, you know, big bore. Probably, you know, um, that's been fine. I would put ahead and put an air compressor on it. Till it don't explode. Um, yeah, I mean, the truck's in pretty good shape.
Chassis not scaled up.
No, no, it's not too big. It's, it seems like it's fine, you know. It, you know, once it comes down to replace that truck, that truck will make a good spare truck when you get some years out of it.
And again, that's a sanding body, obviously, stainless.
Um, y- yeah, well, as a hybrid.
You're not real confident on this one.
You look up at the pile and.
But nobody will see the painted body. You can. What, the corners, the four corners, the body are stainless. The sides of the body are steel and the internals of the body are.
Everything is not stainless, so what the hell?
It is a hybridial. Four insights inside, hybridial steel pores.
So you don't have any stainless bodies besides the lowboys? How long will we get out of that chassis? Think. The new guy next year is gonna say all the trucks done.
Two thousand thirty, thirty years or something like that.
I'm gonna write that down.
Just say you get another eight, eight years then.
I think so. I think so.
Mama damas.
Right.
Buy you a backup, the driver's fault, correctly, when we had that big. Bucket, it was during the time of COVID and we had the money and.
A wheel loader, a loader.
Well, a wheel loader. We bought a wheel loader, we had a backup, yeah, it was just twenty-four payload. They have endured. Thousand. Seventeen. Probably start back going on, this will replace. See, that's out here running for a year, going down here.
Two thousand and three.
Two thousand and three.
Two thousand and three, yeah. Uh, to both, to both backups get used, like. Like, yeah, the older people agree or something.
Yeah, the older one, the two thousand and three is, is, is when we're running the most. Because it's, you know, it's older and, you know, wear it out. You know, the newer one has gravel on the backhoe, um, with the bucket and stuff like that. I think it's used, you know, it's had on the road every single day. The, the order machine is always used on a construction. There we are, looking for mine.
Yeah, I just remember, I kind of love the way we bought it. I thought it was six hundred thousand.
I don't too. Got his attention.
Okay, we, we bought a car, bro, we bought cheap. That, that bad boy, what was two hundred grand on the, on the door, on the sticker on the door, we paid a hundred and twenty thousand.
We'll be paying the load.
Two. Yeah. So we don't need four hundred grand, we pay like.
Didn't we buy it cause we couldn't get a dump truck or something? I forgot, but there's something happened. You brought the loader up at the last.
So, so the other loader, the old loader we replaced. Was, we had, yeah, we had some issues with the front end on it. We rebuilt the front end and this thing was like, you know, I mean, the rest was pretty questionable. And Sourcewell was at like forty-five percent discount at John Deere. I mean, that's, you know, that's.
And we didn't buy two that thing?
No. So we tried to buy a three here, but chassis had.
Two hundred and fifty.
Two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars in twenty-third, in January twenty-three.
Yeah.
Twenty-five hundred months.
Yeah, well, it's almost four hundred and three, I have to stick around there, so. Those deals come up, right? So, you know, sometimes it's worth, you know. Um. The only other thing I have on here is, um, our, our John Deere mowing tractor, which is free tractor with garbage, I've never seen it out there wrecking people's flowers.
Daybill even on it. And it's actually on their site.
It's not, yeah.
Couldn't see the sign and, and just the flowers are too big, I got it.
Right. So anyway, so that's, that's, that machine has almost ten thousand hours on it. Which is substantial for a farm tractor. You know, a farm tractor, farmer normally gets rid of a machine at five thousand hours. Uh, a year and a half ago, like for, we put a hydraulic pump. And accumulators in it, and I believe that was five thousand dollars, yeah, fifty-four hundred dollars for that. And last year, the pool, the, the mowing farm boom. Got a couple of tears in the steel on it. Just from where? You know? Steel gets old. So we have Barzetti's plate, it's re-welded and put that together, that's kind of a telling sign. Cause when the boom starts getting cracks in it. From age, so. And that's another, that's another Sourcewell, um, machine also. It's not a big discount like John Deere is, but it's pretty good, it's, it's, it's not that. That's it for the title there.
Um, I, I won't throw it there, but there's, there's a chance we either move that. Uh, hook lift up, up a year, if we get some extra money. Um, our food scraps program. And we have a grant, we have a use of all, so we might ask to do that at some point, or get something with an arm on it. Because we're trying to get a grant to get a, uh, either an end or grower digester or a composter of some kind. But hopefully the state will chip in. I just kinda wanna throw that out so we can talk about it. So Dan, I'm sorry, just to follow, so that we get this action. It, it could, and it, because.
With help.
With help, yeah, okay, and just kind of throwing it out there, if we can get some money. That, that truck itself is in deep trouble.
Oh, yeah.
And, you know, I, it's desperately need to be done, but it also could be important to help us through the food scrap program, which means these are the funding from the state. And we're, and we're in a place where we're lucky to still get funding, cause a lot of communities aren't getting the funding now, because we were an early adopter to the program.
Uh, we also possibly using some of the NIPS money.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Who's money?
The little NIPS.
Oh. Sound Nick money, I know, you just wanted.
So the hook lift truck, just, just, you guys don't need that. You know, I've shopped the used market, I've looked around, see if something shows up.
The hook truck, we said, we're talking about.
Yeah, yeah, so I've been shopping the used market quite a bit, you know, it's been going off for a while now.
Nothing out there.
There's really not much out there, you know, a truck that has, you know. Two hundred thousand miles on it, or two hundred fifty thousand miles on it is, you know, a hundred forty thousand dollar truck, a hundred thirty thousand dollar truck, right? So that truck probably got some issues, and there's a reason to get rid of it, cause there's a thirty thousand dollar buffer on that truck, it's probably gonna fall off the turbocharger or whatever. So to pay a hundred forty thousand dollars for that truck, right, and then have to dump fifty into it. And be where a new one was, so. Um. That was, your build, so, the, your build chassis from Sourcewell, which is fifteen percent off. The hook lift was at discount, yeah. Uh, but the art, the company does the hook lifts, which, guys, he might does it, our, uh, highway trucks. He's got an international truck up there right now, I think it's an M V series, I'm gonna run up and take a look at that. You know, and it's been rolling that speed. Because I think internet, cause international is bought out by Volkswagen, I think they're trying to take us to discount, so.
Push them out there.
If it's right engine, transmission combination. This is the driving.
Thank you, guys. Short drive. Short drive. Hey, the first question's for.
For anybody.
Anybody? I, I see no other, anybody, uh, having even come before?
I wanna. My track. Very good for this, this is also a page of public works and building maintenance capital.
Oh, I guess we should do that, thank you. I thought we were done. I'm ready to go, man. Ryan, let's go. He's right, we gotta do that.
So when Eric and Bobby and I were talking about earlier today, I asked him just, there's a lot of stuff on this list. Um, none of it, I don't think is anything that would go to a budget referendum. So I just asked Eric not to go through every item, but just hit some of the couple of things that he thinks are priorities. Um, but the list is long, so that when somebody asks a year from now, two years ago, how long has it been on the capital list, it's on the list.
So, um. Just to cover some of the highlights and what's, uh, coming up. These crosswalk warning lights at Greenwood Avenue, also called R R F D's, retended around the plus U D J's, we're looking for that, and we're on board select events. Actually got a couple of meetings. That's actually, I'm not, um, that's probably gonna be closer to thirty-five thousand, not forty-five thousand. Um, we're getting some points right now. Um. The tribals field road drainage bypass design is something that we're, we're looking at, so. After. After the August eighteenth flood that we had, that, 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 that whole cycle would not as bad as Southbury Oxford. Dan came to us and asked us to look at kind of the whole town's. Hotspots for drilling creatures, so that's one thing we've been looking at, and out of that process, we've come up with some. Um, top priorities. A lot of that, we're looking to get FEMA money, so some of these things, um, a lot of things you see that say drainage. Would be an upfront cost for us, but that would be reimbursed by FEMA. So, I would most likely. Um, but in terms of. I think probably the, the biggest priority, uh, which we have, uh, is going to design now is a fifteen-metre circle drainage. That is, uh, an existing pipe, uh, was five, look at people, fifty-four inch pipe. Yeah, that, that got basically clogged with, with rock from, from that storm, it's crazy. Um. Uh, we're gonna be replaced now, we've already talked to FEMA about getting reimbursed for that, so the only, the only issue with FEMA. Um, from your guys' perspective, so obviously we haven't, they're not paying us upfront, so it would incur the cost and then get reimbursed. So a lot of this will. Probably go to net zero in the end. Um. What else? Um. We're drilling, um, Bet upon Dam, see, three thousand, it's probably gonna be less than that, that's just a conservative number. Um, we talked to a contractor about. In that repair, uh, before the summer, or hopefully sooner, we just went out with them last week, to take a look at that. Um. So if you're not familiar, the bridge there kind of got washed out, I don't know if you guys have been to it apart recently, but. Um, that little bridge that goes over the pond, that, there's kind of a washout area, that moved on. Uh, hammered and flooded. So we're gonna fix that. Um. There's a few other drainage studies and things here. I think those are the, the big ones. Um. Some of the things I thought just also mentioned, we're looking at, at parking improvements here at the municipal center. We've been, it's been on there for a while, we're looking at, uh, replacing the, uh. Uh, the dog pound, the animal shelter. Uh, we've gotten. Uh, some good information, we've looked at. Shaw's, we've looked at Danbury, has a new one, new town, fairly doing some work, we're moving forward with that. So that'll come up soon. And, uh. Anything else? Yeah.
It's, it may be worth something, I mean, I don't think we're ever gonna get to that, sex, no drainage, million dollars. You know, I mean, right now, we're talking to FEMA about other options down there, because. We may, may not be able to do it before, and, um, FEMA even has opportunities to buy all sometimes. That's from repetitive loss neighborhood. So I just, I saw that on those, like, just wanted to be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let's. Put everything down, like, say everything's there.
Everything's there. And I, and I did have them put everything on there, just somewhere to start from.
Twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Okay. Um. That's the, the public works page, the next page. Is building maintenance. Um. There we got. Everything. It's all the way at the bottom there, you'll see a bunch of small numbers, that's all the carpet, uh, reconditioning or any to a. In this building. Um. Talking about this. Well, I heard you did.
Yeah, that was, that was a replacement along the, uh, the place where we got.
It's so the top line. It's our Marshall. So that's, that's a beautiful. For the, that's the top of the line. Um, this, we sand salt shed. Do some siding repairs and painting, that's probably gonna, probably gonna bring that pretty guys pretty soon, we got. A quote for that already. Um. Y M C U chimney repair, also have a quote for that. Uh. What else?
I got, I got a question, Bethel train station in Boiler.
Didn't that come out?
So are we talking about the old station or are we talking about the new station? Halfway down.
That should be the new station, in, in terms of where it's coming out, I don't know.
So it would be paid from the trip, no renovation account.
Right.
I think. When Eric made his list, he tried to make a list of.